I would like to welcome everyone to the October 11th work session at 4:00 PM. Note that Ms. Kristin Morrissey is unable to attend in person, but we have her on the audible line in front of us. Can you hear us, Kristin?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, very good. If everybody please stand for the pleasure allegiance.
A pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right. There is an agenda in front of us. Is there any recommended changes to this agenda?
No recommended changes.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt this agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland, second by Ms. Light. All in favor? Agenda passes. Kristin, did I? Agenda passes. The first item on our presentation is the Policy JR Student Records with Kathy Carpenter. Welcome.
All right. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Okay, so the policy needed to be updated for a couple of reasons. The first was for reconciliation pieces for the Georgia Parent Bill of Rights and then just updates to our process that have happened over the last couple of years because of COVID. So the first thing that was changed was a statement about the school system providing written notice about photographs, videos, and voice recordings. This is something that we've had in our procedure for quite some time, like 20 years, but we needed to add it into policy because of the Bill of Rights. So we've added that statement in there. Then the next thing we added was on the school official exception, FERPA requires that school systems tell their parents what are extensions of the school system. So where are other places that we give student information to because they are doing a school-based either job or process for us? So the first thing I changed was counselor. We had in there therapists before, but what's happened over the last couple of years is we're having wraparound services occur. And because of those wraparound services, counselors are being asked to come into our school buildings to help us as students. So it might be in this situation for like a drug counselor who's helping a student through that particular issue during the school day. So please know even though we've added this in there, we also get parent permission for those people to come in as well. The next thing that's changed is in terms of online resources, previously we looked at online resources for things that were textbooks that were put online. Since COVID, our learning resources have become a lot more robust. And so online curriculum resources didn't really cover all of those resources that we are having our students utilize. So we've really expanded that into online learning platforms. So when we think of it in terms of FERPA, we're not just talking about a textbook online. We're talking about production resources. So like in CTAE environments where students are actually creating industry types of work, those are the platforms that we're rostering to and that are extensions of our learning environment in a web-based format. So that's one place that we added on. Additionally, we also put web-based services that are provided to our schools. So a good example of this would be in the past few years, we had free and reduced lunch paper forms that we had parents fill out. Well, since COVID and now that we're coming back into getting those applications, all of that's done in a web-based format. So that's a web-based service provider executing a school task. So that would be something that would be an extension of the school official exception. So those pieces were refined to better describe to parents what we're doing in terms of the school system. Okay. And if you go to the next page, on the bulleted items. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, item number G, where we've struck out student photography, we had to take that out of this particular section because of the Parent Bill of Rights. The Parent Bill of Rights requires a specific type of notification. We have been doing that, but this was a little bit redundant in another notification. So we want to make sure we put the school photograph in just one location for parents. So that's why that strike was there. And if you scroll down to the next section where I have taken out the word his and then added principal in that place, that was just to better describe who is the designee that's being described there. Additionally, I took out the word records manager because at the time when this policy was developed, there was the intention for one single person to be a records manager for the school system. And now records management is a little bit more complicated. And so it's really done by several different departments. In terms of student records, that's handled by my department, the Student Information Systems Department. So I felt like that better described what we were doing. In the next paragraph, I've added a clarifying statement that records requests are always in accordance with FERPA guidelines. And the reason we did that addition there is because we really want to make sure we're laser focused and very clear with our schools that every records release we get is related to the FERPA legal requirements. And there were some things that we really clarified with our schools over the last few years, and I felt like that clarity needed to be put in policy as well. And then on the next page where it talks about parents are able to correct any errors that happened on their student records. Previously, we would have parents put that in writing in a letter format. We actually have an online form that makes it more accessible to our parents. The form can be translated into many languages because it's on our website. And so once that form is completed, if there is a concern, it's then routed to me. And then I work with the principal or whoever the record's related to so that that can be updated. So that statement just kind of helps with that. And then the last thing is the very last sentence of this policy. And I've taken out the parents and guardians may opt out of marketing notifications from photograph yearbook companies and graduation-related services. The reason I took that out is because it was redundant. We already asked that in our parent permission form at the beginning of the school year. So there's no need for a parent to then have to put something in writing to a principal. So we just have that in one location and the parents only have to answer it once. So that was it. So does anybody have any questions about that?
This is the form.
This is the form that through Parent Portal that parents sign at the beginning or they go in and so if a parent doesn't, does it default to allowing? Yeah. So basically what happens is the parents receive a series of notifications. So you know, basically I start notifying parents through Infinite Campus in July, and then we continue those notifications through the end of August. At the August standpoint, then on September 1st, I start notifying the parents saying, hey, we've got another two weeks to get this form in. If you don't, then your permissions default to yes.
Perfect.
And then if parents even after that decide to come back, hey, I missed all of those notifications and I do want to change my decisions, schools have a process where they can print the form off of our website and they can update from that.
Okay, at any time?
At any time.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll say too, the FERPA page is pretty informative for parents. So if they want to learn more about FERPA, they can go there and read all about it. And that's where the complaint form is.
Right, exactly.
Good job. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
The second item on our list is Human Resource Update with Dr. Cindy Sol.
Sorry, I was going to try to get it out of your way. Good afternoon. Thank you all for letting me do my annual update. It is that time of year to let you know about your wonderful employees. You know that when you saw a lot of our certified employees at New Teacher Orientation, it was a great group. And so I want to tell you all about them. So I want to start though first with your governance goals. We believe that we adhere to your goal two, three, and four. Obviously, our name, Human Resources, is in goal two. Your Human Resources is obviously your very best resource and your most important one. So we do support that. Goal three, effective and efficient financial planning. As you all know, your staff salaries and benefits and that kind of thing make almost 90% of your budget. So obviously, we do our very best to make that effective and efficient and do our allotments and all of that so that you can use your money in the best possible way. Goal four, making our large schools feel small. The reason we feel like we support that is because we hire good people who form relationships with students. And when they form individual relationships with students, large places, no matter how many people are there, feel small. So we believe we support that too. In your strategic plan, there are five goals and we are one of them. Staff recruitment and development. We believe that the recruitment and development of our staff is what's going to make our system stay first class. And so that is one of our strategic plan goals. And as you know, when we worked with our community, it was very evident that our community understands that our teachers in our classrooms are important. So let me tell you about who you have working for you. Obviously, over the years, we've grown. In 2019, we had a little over 5,300 employees. This year, at this point, we have over 6,000. And so in that, obviously, from last year to this year, we've grown at least 411 positions. The red is the classified positions and the blue are the certified positions. And you see, we've grown in both. Our people-teacher ratios have remained the same, but we have grown and we also have opened a new school. To tell you about our employment, last year, we had 37, 31 certified staff. This year, we have 277 more and so we have 4,008 certified staff. Classified, we have also grown. There are 134 more of those. And the other are your substitute teachers. And obviously, there are more of those, 164 more of those. So in their teaching experience, zero to three years of experience in our system, they're 11.8%. Four to nine years, 20.4%. 10 through 15 years of experience, 20.8%. 16 to 20, 19.8%. 21 to 25, 15.8%. 26 and above, 11.5 years of experience.
I just wanted to point out, go back to that graph, that's a really good balance if you look at it. About half of our staff, 15 years or less, and about 50%, 16 years or more. So that's a very, very good mix, good balance.
And to Dr. Behren's point, it's a metric that all the area school systems use because you don't want too many brand-new teachers and you don't want a lot at the end who are going to leave you because they're retiring. So it is a good balance. Of our new employees, our little department has been working diligently to get since June, the first, 778 new people onboard. Of those 778, 480 are certified hires. And I'm proud to tell you, of those 480, 46 of them moved from parent pro to teacher. We're proud of them for doing that, and we're also proud of our Grow Your Own program. That's a good number. Of our new people.
I'm sorry, Kristin?
I just had a question. If you think about that, that's over three marks. That's an incredible amount of work that they have had to do just to do all the intake and hiring and it's just an awful lot of work. So I just really wanted to mention that. That's a huge number of people for you to thank.
Thank you. We were a little surprised at the number ourselves. Usually it's around 400, 450, and then they kept coming this year. So thank you for saying that, Kristin. New certified staff. Of the years' experience, now to Dr. Behren's point, we've now got of our new people that we've hired, 52% have zero to three years. So we hired a lot of new teachers right out of school and with just a few years of experience. So 52% of our new hires have zero to three years' experience. Four to nine, 18%. 14% years 10 through 15. And nicely, we are still attracting staff of all kinds of years. So 16 through 20 years of experience, 8%. 6%, 21 through 25. And even those 26 above, 2%. So we are hiring people of all years of experience. So over the years, obviously, we've tried to diversify our staff. And from last year to this year, the new hire certification, we have increased, as you can see, Hispanic from 5% to 6%, 1%. Multiracial, we have also increased it this year of our new hires by 1% to 2%. We have increased our African-American percentages by 2% to 4%. And our Asian-Pacific Islanders from 2% to 3%. So as we look for staff, rest assured that we are looking for diversity, whether it's male, female, whether it's race, religion, whatever, we're trying to certainly make sure that all of our staff is diverse as possible. To give you an update on our administrators, we have 12 new different positions, eight brand-new principals to the system, to that role, and four internal transfers. In other words, a principal went from one school to another. Assistant principals, 24 brand-new APs with nine internal transfers. The internal transfers for assistant principals are often a growth move. They've done a good job, and we're trying to grow our own and making sure they're ready to be a principal by seeing different areas of our community. When we recruit, obviously, that is a very important part of what we do every day. We do virtual and in-person recruiting. So this tells you that the number of job fairs that we have attended virtually have been nine. Of those nine, we've made 180 contacts. Of those 180 virtual contacts, we made 27 new employees, new hires out of that, which is a 6.2% of our virtual recruitment efforts. In-person, obviously, it's more because it's more of a personal touch, obviously. We attended 27 in-person job fairs. That includes ours. But in that 27, we've gone all over the southeast. And we go in-person, we talk to people, and of those, we've talked to 843 people. We've hired 192 of those people from an in-person job fair for 44.24%. So almost half of our hires have been, or right at half, have been either virtually or in-person job fairs. We do a lot of other things, but the job fairs obviously are very important to us. In the strategic plan goal, acquiring and retaining excellent staff is certainly the goal there. And so recruiting, we are trying to reduce that, increase the percentage of candidates that are hired as a result of our recruitment efforts by 3%. So we want to go from 50.46% to 51.95% in order to show that in fact, our recruitment efforts are improving and doing more and more for us. As we look at our retention trends over the years, in 2016, we had a 94.3 retention of our certified staff. It went up as high as 96.2 in 2020. As you know, people stayed in their jobs. You all were gracious enough to pay people during the pandemic, even though they weren't in a classroom in front of teachers and in front of students, and therefore they stayed. This year, we're a little down to 91.5 in our retention. And there are all kinds of reasons for that, but one of the big ones is, I know you've heard it, is the great resignation. It is happening all over the nation, and we are impacted by it too. So this is not a Forsyth County problem, it's a national problem. When we separate them, we took a look, and when they left us, we tried to see what age of, how many years of experience they had and when they left. So as you can see, zero to three is 13%, four to nine is 38%. And so that makes up a great deal of the certification. So zero to nine years is very important for us to work on keeping people employed in our system because those are the times, obviously, that they leave. The next most, 10 to 15 years, 22% and on up. 16, 20 years of experience, 15% separated. And 21 to 25 years, 8%. And 26 to 33%. And in fact, the 26 to 33%, those are the ones who retired. And of course, you've got your 31% at 1% and more years at 1%. So 4% from 26 to above however many number of years is not very much considering the staff that we have. So we do keep them. Once we keep them for a while, they stay with us for a long time. So we're proud of that.
Over the last couple of years, that has always been a concern in education, is the four through nine, right?
It's four what?
The four years to nine years?
Yes.
It's not something new or is it significantly higher this year with that? Because I know that over like the last four years, we've had conversations, and even the Georgia School Board Association has conversations about how to retain that, you know, those personnel that have been there for that time period. And that's a hard time period for teachers.
It is. And one of the reasons it divides from nine to 10 years, the 10 up stay, is they get vested in TRS at 10 years. So once they stay at 10 years, it's a really difficult decision to leave that career because you've got that retirement and you've put in good 10 years and you're vested. So that does help us keep people. We asked them why they left. So this is what they told us. 28% for their health or their family's health or a family reason. And that could be maternity, that kind of thing, staying home with that young, young little one. Transfer to another district, 25%. Relocation is 21%. New career is 19. And either they didn't give us a reason or something else for 8%. We looked at it then on the years four through 15 because as you said, those are very critical years for us. So 60% of our certified staff who resigned this past year had between four and 15 years of experience. It's a little different as you see the hierarchy of why they left. Four to nine years of experience and the same in 10 through 15, health or family is the reason that they left. But on the four to nine, a lot of, 25% chose a new career. And again, that's that great resignation and they're finding other things to do. Entrepreneurship, that kind of thing. I know you see it everywhere in the news and in the media. Transfer to another district, 21%. We are having a situation where our younger people cannot afford to live in our area, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a minute. Relocating, 13%. Transferring to another district for salary or location or relocating are two of the highest ones. And then some of them didn't give us a reason. Once they stay with us 10 years, 10 to 15 years, again, health and family is important and they do have to make some difficult decisions there. Relocating, 21%. Transfer to another district, 19%. New career, 14%. So you see, it's a little bit less with them starting a new career and then 12%, no reason given. In our strategic plan, obviously, retaining our staff is important to us, just not acquiring them, but retaining them. So we want to increase the percentage of retained staff by 3% of the gap. So we do want to move that needle back up to that higher number of 91.75. And we also want to increase the percentage of retained staff in high needs area. You know, that's math, science, and special education. And so those are just very difficult, as you noted on some other things. That's always been the way it is, but we have to continue to make sure that we're keeping those special ed classes staffed as well as science and The teacher crisis is real and it's not new. In 2015, the state of Georgia asked teachers about what was going on. And you can see Franklin County Middle School teacher said something has got to be done. Education is in a major crisis. Well, here we are in 2022, and the state of Georgia asks again, you know, what is going on? One of the statements there is if you want to address the burnout problem, the first step is repeating and internalizing this mantra. Burnout is about your organization, not your people. And so we've been working very hard to make sure that our organization is absolutely top-notch so they'll want to come here and they'll want to stay here because we're competing for the same people, whether it's Hall County or Cherokee County, Fulton or Gwinnett. We're competing for the same people. And so the burnout, we need to be sure, doesn't happen here. So this summer, we spent a lot of time with our principals and our assistant principals talking about the employee experience. In talking about that, that is everything from a balance of their well-being to making sure that we're reanalyzing schedules to duties and that kind of thing so that we can make sure we're meeting their needs so that in fact, they just don't want to leave us. In that, we've had several action steps, and I want to give you a couple of examples. Within our department, we're making certain that we're talking about the employee experience, helping our principals understand that it's a new world and that while over the past years, teachers have flopped here because it's a great place to work and live, now they're not out there. They're not coming through the pipeline, they're choosing other things, and they're simply not choosing education. So we have to make sure our principals understand what's going on out there. And we have to balance that with their social emotional wellness because a healthy, hearty teacher is important to that classroom. If they're not that, they certainly can't be in the classroom. You all were great about compensation this past year. You increased salaries of all kinds, whether it was classified or certified, and we're certainly grateful for that. You put us back into competition in a better way, and we appreciate that. Allotments, we did not change the pupil-teacher ratio allotment, but you gave other allotments from instructional coaches to athletic directors and those kind of things. So we appreciate that. That helps in more ways than you can imagine. We have built on our community and university partnerships. In fact, this year, we have 15 residency students with the University of North Georgia. They are fourth-year college students. They're in their senior year, and they are the teacher of record in their classes. So they are able to teach, draw a small salary, go into one of our classrooms, be the teacher of record, and build their first year of teacher retirement. So it's a great partnership both ways for them and 15 slots of teachers that we would have had to find somewhere else. Forsyth Teacher Academy, this is our largest cohort yet. And as you know, over the years, we've built that last four years or so. And we have sought people who had four-year degrees in other fields, and they've come here, been able to get their teaching certificate while they've taught. And as I said, this is our largest cohort ever. So growing our own. Induction and mentoring, this is one of the things that we have to be sure that we do because if we don't induct them from the day they sign on and do their first piece of paperwork to the day they walk in their classroom and then mentor them through all the difficult situations and the daily process of teaching, they will not stay with us. Teaching is a hard profession and they have to have that support. So we are shoring that up every which way we can. And one of the nice things that you did this year was increase the day of pre-planning for our new teachers that are coming to work with us so that we could give them another time of support so that they would know more about what to do and not be so shocked that first day of school when the children rolled into the classroom. So that is our update. Do you have any questions? We've got some great people out there.
Any questions? Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristin, you got anything?
No, Dr. Lam, did you want to expand at all about the challenge for our teachers, especially parenting teachers on living here?
Well, yes, I did actually. I forgot to tell you that. I did bring the numbers that we had this year, both classified and certified, if I can find my numbers. I think it was 46 of them. We had certified teachers that we had employed, onboarded, some of them you had already voted on, who then came to find a place to live and called us and said we cannot afford to live there. And then we also had some classified staff who said I've had to hunt a job with more pay. So living here is expensive, and so they're living in outlying counties, and then those counties are offering them their job because then they don't have to commute and they don't have to worry about commuting into an expensive place to live. So it is becoming a real phenomenon for us, and we didn't expect it. We had a couple last year, but 46 this year is pretty significant.
So that's safe to say 46 of the 758 positions that you had to fill?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, you know, we had to find 46 other people. We have talked to the Chamber of Commerce about that to try to see if they can help us figure out what we might do. We have had apartment complex reach out and give some teacher discounts, but it's usually a discount about their deposits and that kind of thing, not a monthly discount. But I do know in talking with the Chamber of Commerce that there are communities But I do know in talking with the Chamber of Commerce that there are communities that will reserve some areas of a, say, an apartment complex or a condominium area that they will go first to teachers and say, would you like to live here? Because quite frankly, they're a good bet. I mean, they've got a salary. They've got an income. Uh, you don't have to take a risk. They're, they're nice to take a risk on because we've hired them. So we're hoping that as the years go by, we can shore up some of that. Anything else, Kristen? Did I, did I cover what you wanted me to?
No, that doesn't make sense. I know it's, it's a blessing. We have such a well-developed county. But it's a challenge that I suppose September of 2022, the median home price is $585,000. And that's a challenge for starting teachers and for our service workers, but, um, so it's a hard challenge to meet.
It is.
Thank you for going over that.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our list is the SOFO Sports Park Proposal and the introductions will be done by Dr. Jeff Bearden.
Okay. Um, joining me this evening, we have Rick Nelson. Rick, if you want to come on up with SOFO Sports Park and also Joe Stein from the Economic Development Authority. Uh, Rick is going to take us through and, and, and talk about the SOFO Sports Project. I will tell you, as we analyze this as a school system and had Nathan Turner, our athletic administrator, look at this closely, uh, if this were to come to fruition, there's no question it'd benefit, uh, athletes throughout Forsyth County. Uh, this particular project, I don't want to take any way any of your thunder, Rick, is on 62 acres and a indoor area of 168,000 square feet. I believe I have that correct, uh, which again would be a huge benefit for our athletes in Forsyth. So Rick, if you want to kind of ta, take us through the project and then we'll have Joe take us through what the ask is from the Economic Development Authority.
Thank you, Dr. Bearden. Yeah. So, uh, like you talked about, 62 acres, uh, on the corner of Brookwood and Peachtree Parkway in South Forsyth. We will have nine state-of-the-art all turf baseball fields, 125,000 square foot box of indoor facility with 165,000 square feet of usable space inside. We'll have a entertainment kind of green space complex with two restaurants with one of them having, um, 21 indoor/outdoor pickleball courts connected to it. So something that's going to be really popular for the community, um, for the homes surrounding that area. Yeah, it's, it's. Well, I hope to see both you out there. So we really wanted, as we're designing this plan, right, we really wanted to kind of hit all the boxes that we felt the community could really grasp on. And as you see in the, in the kind of verbiage, obviously the baseball softball on the diamond fields. And on the indoor, you know, we can do the volleyball, the basketball, the cheer, the pickleball, obviously outside, the esports, um, wrestling. Um, and, and the one thing too that we really wanted to focus on was the esports. Talking to Mr. Turner, um, hearing your guys' success as a county with the schools was really motivating for us. That's one thing that he really wanted to talk to me about. I think we could really work together hard on that too, to grow that program for you guys and hold some, you know, cool events for you guys. Do you want me to kind of touch about the, the youth sports market? Okay. So one thing that's been really good about youth sports is it was almost COVID resistant, which is very rare out of everything that happened. Um, Georgia in particular, right? Not other places in the country, but Georgia in particular, if they did a good job getting everybody back out there to be active. As you see, this is close to a $50 billion industry right now in youth sports. Something that we feel extremely great about and also to the employment generator. We're hoping to journey close to about 550 full-time jobs on our site. And, and our goal is that we can have all Forsyth County residents working on our site. That's a, a real big thing that we're really going to try to work really hard to make sure we can have happen. So a little more in-depth about the, the projects, which we talked about. Uh, our team, uh, Todd Green, uh, former Major League Baseball player, local community guy, 12 years in the league. He and I operate a youth baseball academy now called the TGD Backs. We have 36 teams. Uh, close to 500 kids in our academy right now playing for us, which this will be their home, home base. Chad Faulkner will be operating our indoor facility. Chad is the CEO of Sports Academy. Sports Academy has a location in Thousand Oaks, California and Frisco, Texas. Sports Academy got pretty popular a few years back. Um, they partnered with Kobe Bryant. It was a mob academy. Once they lost Kobe, they went back to Sports Academy. So they've done a great job transitioning back to running their business. Myself, Rick Nielsen, um, Michael Grade will be our operators of the entire campus. Michael has done eight of these projects across the country. One of them he was a part of was Lake Point. Joe Schaub, um, our CEO, he, uh, has a very experienced background as a CFO. Currently he's a CFO of Lees Query. Uh, some of our board of advisors currently right now, um, which is a big day and hopefully the, the team can wake up because I keep checking my phone, but Tom Glavine, Chipper Jones and Matt Olson. Uh, it was big for us to get as many, um, kind of local heroes that believed in us and to be a part of this project with us. Guys that could actually step foot on our campus and actually teach our kids, um, be part of our clinics, our camps and really can give back. And also too, um, you know, Matt's a younger guy, so he's been sharing his experiences with us on, what did he like as a kid? What did he wish, you know, traveling the world and during tournaments, what could they've done better? So they've been a really good asset to us. Um, Montana Fouts, we brought her in on the softball side. She's one of the, um, most winningest, uh, women's softball collegiate pitchers. So it was really important for us to have the female focus with us there too, on the campus. Ryan Sherry, professional pickleball player, uh, great guy, a lot of energy. Um, pickleball's new to me. So we really need to kind of bring an expert in with us to make sure that we're doing things the right way. And then, um, Dominique Wilkins. So Dominique currently has a 16-year-old son who's one of the top players in the country. And Dominique is very passionate with us on what we're doing on the Sports Academy side. Um, and he'll be a, a big help. He's also partners in a company called CBA Flooring, which is the top flooring company for the hardwood. So, um, very good group of people that really, um, are helping us also too, not just, uh, lending their name to us. Some of our key project partners, uh, Nelson Architects, Lamar Wakefield is our architect on this project. Uh, Vertical Earth, a local company here will be doing all of our earth moving, grading. Gilbane will be the contractor. Um, the reason why we selected Gilbane, they did Lake Point. They did the, uh, 175,000 square foot indoor building. They came in on time and under budget for them. And so that building still today is the largest clear span, uh, youth sports building. So, you know, using people that know what they're doing was big to us. Uh, Bowler's doing our civil engineering. Uh, AshoTurf, so all of our fields will be all turf. Uh, Ephesus Sports Lighting, um, very important for us to use, um, a lighting company that is being used in other stadiums right now. Ephesus is, um, is able to do programming. So when kids hit a homerun, you can dim the lights, you can do flashes. You give them a real big league experience. You can dim like you're the Braves stadium when everyone's coming out doing the tomahawk chop. So just a real fun experience. CBA, which I mentioned to you guys. Uh, U triple S A Baseball is a tournament provider that we're in talks to for the baseball and softball side. Pixalot is a video streaming service. Um, thing is kind of cool with their software today. If people want to watch from home, you can actually get your phone out. Tommy's in right field. Grandma at home can actually move their phone to right, like you would be to right field and she can just watch Tommy the whole time. So some, some pretty cool things out there that, um, you know, really diving into this project that we've learned about would be some really good, good assets for us. Team Travel Source, um, that's who would be doing all of our hotel bookings for us, um, and making sure that all of our people that travel for us book in Forsyth County first. So when they go to the site, it'll look like an Expedia website and everything will say, you know, point one miles, 1.2 miles. So everything's been listed Forsyth County hotels first and then outside the county after they book up and sell, which is another important piece to us as we're driving more revenue to the county. Sean Courtney, um, from Lipskin Johnson is doing our entitlements with us. And, uh, Morris Manning and Martin have been on the business side with us. Once again, some more of our strategies, um, lines of business and revenue streams. Um, we currently have the baseball club teams now. We'll expand that. Um, we'll be having the tournaments. We'll be starting the softball. Uh, with basketball, uh, Sports Academy brings their club travel team organization now. They have a, they're actually a Nike organization. We'll be looking to partner with a local volleyball, uh, travel team to partner with us. We kind of, we touched on the pickleball. Um, Sports Academy will be having leagues, tournaments, training, sports performance and physical therapy inside. Um, we'll have the two restaurants. We'll have concessions and we'll have one retail store inside the baseball park. Talked about our, um, our current baseball team. Um, at this time, it's a little outdated. We had 30 teams. We actually have 36 now today. We picked up six during the fall. Currently we have, uh, Johnny Magliozzi, Wes Reiners and Todd Green running that academy for us. One thing to kind of note that we're proud of is, you know, we currently have, um, over the last couple of years, we've had 331s commit to go play in college. So another goal for us here in the county to hopefully we can keep growing. We'll dive into the baseball complex. Nine all turf baseball fields, um, video scoreboards that will actually be working. If anyone has kids that play today, nine times out of ten they go, those scoreboards are off because they want to sell a subscription to you. Our scoreboards will be on and working. Um, live video streaming we talked about, elite LED lighting with as close to zero bleed as we can find. Chairback seating, kind of like you would find at a, at a Braves game in the first four seats, first four rows, I'm sorry, with the cloth back chairs. For us, but that's really important, right? This is for the experience, for people that come here and want to stay here and play here, you know, make it comfortable for them. Uh, the retail clubhouse I talked to you guys about, concessions and, uh, wifi in a park, a couple more things. We will have misters and a playground inside there as well too. We will have three. We have three high school regulated. And one thing that we've, um, talked about, Mr. Turner, is during your guys' rainouts, he let me know that you guys actually bus your teams to Lake Point. So that will not be happening once this park opens. You guys will be coming down the road and, and seeing us. Talk about the Sports Academy indoor facility. Um, so this is currently the facility in Thousand Oaks, California. And this is pretty close to what the same model we, we will be doing inside here. Only difference is, is the posts you see inside there, we will not have and we will not have sand volleyball. Integrated sports medicine, diagnostic labs, biomechanics labs, cognition labs, performance training center, performance nutrition bar, recovery suites. We will actually have eight basketball courts inside ours, which converts to 16 volleyball courts. We'll have close to 15,000 square feet of turf inside. Um, we will have a small sprint track as well. Uh, we will not have a sand pit. Um, we will have the esports dedicated environment inside there. And we are in talks of bringing Gracie Bar Jiu-Jitsu into the campus as well. They've currently have it in Thousand Oaks and they just brought them out to Texas. We'll have an athlete lounge, um, classrooms for training sessions, uh, media room, um, a mezzanine space so that parents and viewers can rest comfortably above, look down, watch the games if they don't want to sit on the court. Uh, VIP entrance and exits, uh, that is very important for us to have at this facility as we're bringing in high level, uh, coaches because at that time they're not allowed to talk to the players if they come to watch them in non-recruiting times. So that's, uh, something that's very important that we will have that most places out here do not have. Management, staff offices, meeting rooms. Um, we're going to park this thing the best that we can. We feel very comfortable with the amount of parking spaces we have on the site. Everybody very comfortable. This is their space in Frisco, Texas. Uh, we will not be building anything like this. So I want to put a big asterisk there because that's usually the first thing everyone says to me because this is a, an amazing building. This is part of Jerry World with the Cowboys. So kind of the same stuff that we have, right? Um, a lot of the medical, same things we'll, we'll share here. The Gatorade Sports Science Institute will still have a, a smaller portion of that with us. We're still trying to work out with Gatorade right now. Best want to kind of share with you guys, um, kind of something current they're doing. Commercial town centers. So for us, it was really important to have a green space, um, kind of like what Avalon and Halcyon has to really activate with the community. We felt that was something that was really needed in that area. I think, you know, the, the nearest restaurant to there is Taco Mac. So we really wanted to get every, all the residents happy with some, some good eating establishments. With the pickleball, cornhole, um, kind of some rooftop lounge area access. Our current budget, um, we're projected right now, um, just under $143 million investment into this project. Based on, um, all of our reports and kind of backed up by the Pendleton Group, when we're trying to figure out the projected economic impact and visitors, um, we're expecting to have about 975,000 visitors on our site per year. Over 110 events plus our everyday life that's going to take place on the campus through the local community as well. Given the average, the actually average of what parents spend when they go to travel to these tournaments is actually $210. Ours is able to be at $155 because, um, our average hotel cost is less than some of those other areas in Forsyth County. If we were to expand that into Alpharetta and other areas, that price would go up. But like I said, our goal is to have everybody stay in Forsyth County. And we were expecting to see a direct result of $151 million of economic impact on Forsyth County on a, on a large halo. This was, um, stuff with the Development Authority. I kind of really want to focus on how we want to partner with you guys as a school board. And Mr. Turner's been great with me and we spent a lot of time together, kind of walking that through and talking all the ideas. And I think it's going to be an ongoing process because he has a lot of great ideas for us to incorporate all of them and we want to incorporate all of them. But I think some of the big ones for us really is creating leagues and clubs for local residents across multiple sports and age groups. Setting time for open use and rentals for local residents for pickup games and recreational use. Granting a priority of access for local high schools, use the facility as a backup location for games and practices in the event of inclement weather. Acting as a venue for important events on the high school counter such as championship games and graduations. And, and like we also talked about, um, even at the recreational level too, is, is allowing the, the kids that maybe they don't have the opportunity to play at a, at a nice facility, um, to come play, you know, their championship games on the weekdays with us also too.
Mr. Turner talked about possibly doing state championships here now because we have that.
Yeah, wrestling state championships, any type of state championships that, um, he can get granted with the, the clear space. We'll have about 75,000 square feet of clear space inside the building. Providing enhanced entertainment options for the surrounding area from viewership at tournaments, new dining options, special events. Provide venues for championship finals for county recreational programs or high schools. And another thing too is really offering clinics for the county rec program coaches across multiple sports is coaching those guys up with our guys that we currently have on our staff. And, and Mr. Turner has a lot of great other options. So this list will probably be triple the size when it's all said and done with us. Thank you, guys. And I should turn it over to Mr. Stein.
Are there any questions about the actual complex or layout or anything like that, or the impact it will have on the community? No questions? Alright. Thank you.
Alright. Well, Dr. Bearden, Chairman, Board members, thank you very much for allowing me to come today and for listening to this project. And, uh, we got introduced at the Development Authority of Forsyth County to this project earlier in the year. And it was brought to us as something, our mission is really to try to spur economic development in the county itself. You all probably know better than anyone else that when you have a lot of residential units come in, you feel the pain as a school board more than most of us in the county do. But every residential unit, uh, usually uses about a thousand dollars more services and pays in taxes to the county. So it's kind of a pull away. So our job is to try to find economic development that will help bring commercial revenues to the tax base and keep down the payments for citizens in the county itself. Uh, this is why this project was brought to us. Actually, Commissioner Chairman Alfred John asked us at Development Authority to take a deep dive on this and look at the project itself and come up with a recommendation and for the Board of Commissioners and for all those around. To do that, we spent an awful lot of time researching this project. We've actually made, uh, visits to, uh, similar facilities around the area here and looked at their revenue and looked at the participation they had. And we hired a Pendleton Group, who is an economic development firm, which includes a former commissioner of economic development, Craig Lesser, uh, former senior project manager, Amanda Shalendra and Alan Ash, who was, uh, an executive director for economic development in Fulton County for. in Fulton County for, for many years in the past, to look at this project. Everyone has looked at this and really highlighted the fact that this has the potential to be a catalyst project, something that is very unique to the county, something that we've been lacking for a long time. To, you've heard the term, uh, a hundred and forty-three million dollars, uh, basically investment in our county. To put that in perspective for you, that is the equivalent of every single economic development project we've had Forsyth County for the first seven months of this year. When you look at a hundred and fifty-one million dollars of economic revenue every year coming into the county, that is a massive amount that will benefit the citizens of Forsyth, including the schools of Forsyth, with the East Sloss that goes along with that for many years to come. But you can imagine with the size of this project and the economic times we're in, that there is an ask that's coming from the developers here in Sopho to actually help us make this a reality for the citizens of Forsyth County. And their ask is twofold for us, and that is, number one, uh, they are going to finance thirteen million themselves of the hundred and forty-three million. They are going to get a subordinate lender to, uh, come up for thirty million, and they are asking Development Authority to issue a bond backed by the county for one hundred million. Now, to be very clear on that, that's not the county or Development Authority putting out any money. It's basically a guarantee, should things go wrong, that the county would take over the project per se, including the additional forty-three million dollars of investment from other sources, which by itself would not be a bad deal. But what, what that is, is that allows them to get a loan for about three to four percent less in these times where the interest rates are skyrocketing, which equates to about twenty million dollars over the life of the project itself. Our theory, uh, in looking at incentives, which is one of our purview in here, is you should give an incentive for two reasons. One is that if it is required to actually make a project which will benefit the county and all of its people, uh, a reality and allow it to come to pass, that's a valid reason for going it, or bringing it here as opposed to other counties that are competing for that project, uh, again with that benefit. And the second reason is, once you invest so much money in a project, you can imagine, as you would realize from, uh, everything with the schools here, you've got the first tenuous years after you make that investment, you're building the business, and your expenses are higher, the outlife, the, to finance the bonds and everything are, uh, there as well. So to help them in the years after the project initiates is the second reason for, for development. So the request from, uh, the folks here at Sopho Sports Group is for the county to back that bond, uh, for, uh, the duration of the bond itself, and then also they're asking for a ten-year tax abatement, cascading down ten percent year, uh, across the period of time. Now, to give you some feel for, uh, the parcels itself and some basic numbers to look at, and I'll highlight here that we have a very detailed and well-accepted economic development software package called Loci that actually shows in every case, we would not consider something unless it was economically beneficial to the county. I've given to the Chairman a copy of the package that went through with our resolution and shows the numbers are exceedingly good for this project for the county. But to give you, uh, just a snapshot of this, the two parcels, the sixty-two acres that this county is on, or this project would be put on right now, is generating basically two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of tax revenue per year for the county, of which you get about seventy percent. When this project is realized in full, that, uh, the estimation from Steve Lamb and the Board of Assessors is that this will generate one point five million dollars per year in tax revenue for the county, of which you, again, will get about seventy percent. In addition to that, with a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of, uh, annual direct investment coming here, you can count on about one point five million dollars per year coming to, uh, the Board of Education through East Sloss. So the benefits, uh, it seems to us are exceedingly good for the schools as well as for the county itself. Now, we've also, uh, asked in this case, and as we went around researching different counties across the area, we wanted to make sure that there was actually no detriment to, uh, the schools, to the teachers, to anyone in the county. And so what we've asked to have included in this contract is something called a pilot payment, which is basically a payment in lieu of taxes. So that says from the very beginning of the project, every year, there will be a two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar payment to the county, which would go to the Board of Education in its amount and everyone else, too, so that there is zero loss whatsoever during the period of abatement. Really, all it's doing is giving them a slightly slower growth in the increased taxes they're paying, so that we can get this project across the board, make sure it's successful after the beginning years, uh, and that it's something that generates great revenue many years to come for this county. I'll tell you, uh, I should have mentioned earlier, Grant Schmelk is with me, another board member, uh, from the Development Authority. He has not only the honor of being a board member, but he's got several daughters that happen to go to cheer and lacrosse and a few other sports around, and he's very familiar with projects of this nature, and very familiar with another facility, which is Lake Point, not too far from here, which we already talked about today in terms of busing kids across. If you were to go over there and take a look at how packed those fields are every weekend and that facility is, you would see just how much this can bring to the community. As a final point I'd mention to you, we, we have a banker, uh, on our board with us. Grant was a banker before. We were already seeing, uh, getting indications that there are several hotels looking to come into the county, uh, in anticipation of this, and several other loan applications are coming out because of the economic benefit this, this will have to the community. So the request here, uh, is, uh, we at Development Authority have already voted, uh, through our powers to grant, uh, the ten-year tax abatement from our side. Our recommendation is that the school board go along, uh, as well in that, to help the success of this project that brings such great benefit to all of us, and that the county commissioners, when they, uh, bring this up for a vote, which we hope will be later in the month, that they would agree, uh, to back, uh, the hundred million dollar bond as well that helped bring this, uh, to our county. I'd, I'd mentioned to you before that, uh, we had, uh, the Pendleton Group look at this, and the feedback we've got from this is this is exactly the type of project that counties across Georgia are competing for, and it's something that they would term as a catalyst project because of how much it actually brings extra in addition to the direct benefit to us. Uh, we've been probably, since, uh, one of the reasons I came on this board is because, frankly, our commercial tax base has been going in the wrong direction for a number of years. Uh, it's something that has not helped our citizens out, will not help us in the future. We need to take action to help fix this, and to do it with something that brings so much, uh, benefit to the schools itself by the very nature of the project, you know, as well as economic development, that makes great sense. So we have passed to you a, a copy of our resolutions. We would certainly recommend to you, for your consideration, that, uh, you join us in that tax abatement and help make this a success for us, and I'm ready to answer any questions anyone may have.
The area, it is so crowded already. What, what, I wonder what the residents, Kristen, are you there? It's her, in her back door, isn't it?
Yeah.
What, what's the feel about it down? I just wonder what the feel in that end wa, in that end of the county was.
I think people are excited about the potential for the project, of course. I mean, especially things like the backup of the, the baseball fields, for example, on, on the range range practices. I mean, that is a huge help or the potential for the indoor facilities as well. So I think cheerleading volleyball, uh, even potentially, I hope wrestling, things like that. There hasn't, I, one of the things I didn't think of the past while we were meeting is non-sports or typical sports things such as, um, indoor drum line and things like that that are also our, sort of our fine arts that have needs for indoor practices as well. One of the questions I had, a small thing, was the indoor seating capacity for the, for the, say, the basketball facilities? What, what's the capacity for the seating in those?
That's going to be something we have to work out with the Fire Marshal. We're going to have about seventy-five thousand square feet of clear open space, so, um, that's something I'm going to have to work with him on.
What does the graduations we're mentioning, I'm just curious, what, you know, how many of our, could, it makes, if it's one of our, our, our smaller schools, I suppose, our traditional large, but that could be interesting for, say, our life academy or one of our smaller schools, but, um...
Yeah, um, in, in our early talks, it's been, um, mentioned about middle schools and elementary schools.
Yeah, which is, that would be extremely helpful, actually. One of the clarify, oh, I do want to clarify, and I think you already did that presentation, I appreciate, with it being the pilot project, we would still, we would not lose any revenue over the ten-year abatement. It's just basically, it's a freezing of the current tax situation, and the abatement is over the increase of the investment you do over the next ten years, so it would not be a, uh, a loss of revenue in this interim, so to speak.
That's exactly correct. In fact, it would ramp up, uh, across the ten-year period to the full amount at the end.
Yep.
Charlie, you asked about the community. The only other thing, one of the things that I've asked Mr. Neal to do, um, highly consider, one of the challenges in South Forsyth as it's been developed over the years is the majority of the commercial developments down there, particularly the collection, but you can name any of them, whether it's Lowe's, Crowe's, Public, all the publics down there. The, it, the entrance, entrances and exits are not designed well for traffic facilities, and I think we've all seen the collections, the entrance exit does not function well. So we've asked them from the open in there, as they design, to please make sure there is multiple, um, right turn lanes, left turn lanes onto one forty-one, because they will have a large number of people coming and going, unlike all the other developments down there that have more of a regular flow. So that's something we highly ask them to put in their design plan, because we know the collection does not work well. And the only one that works well down there is directly across the street, which is Walmart, and so they could look across the street and copy that because it works very well. So that's something that the community feels very strongly about.
That's almost like the same request we get when we build a new school. Traffic's going to be a nightmare. You need to fix the nightmare in the area when we build a new school.
Oh, I had to, the, the question about what do the residents in the south feel about it? I live in the south there, too, and I, I would welcome, again, uh, some new restaurants coming in the area, which I'm sure this thing will, will generate.
Also joining us today, we have...
Thank you.
We have Slade Gullidge and James McCoy from the Chamber. Anything you guys want to add to what's been said?
Phenomenal project. The development of the community is, is, is a great opportunity for this community, and we are extremely supportive, very excited about it.
Thank you. And in terms of the timeline, I wanted to make sure all members of the board had a chance to hear the presentation, both from the complex and from the Economic Development Authority. So it'll be on our agenda next Tuesday night for a vote, which I think keeps it in line with what's going to happen at the county level. Just want to make sure board members had a chance to, if they had any questions about whether the facility or the request for the tax abatement, that we address those tonight, so you're prepared for next week.
Tom?
Yeah, all I, all I would say is it points out how expensive the land on the south end of the county has gotten. They're paying about three million an acre. So we don't need to be building schools down there.
Yeah. I know for me, um, you know, I'm not a tax abatement person, and I actually voted against the last one in two thousand and nineteen. However, with this, I think that this is an exciting project. One is because Nathan Turner was excited, and then, uh, with, um, the follow-up of, this is a community project. This is going to benefit the community.
It's different.
And it's going to help Sloss. And for us, we took a big step last year and created a capital improvement plan based solely on Sloss. So we pay as we go, and so I think that we don't know what that looks like, but this can only benefit for it, and so, um, I do support it, uh, from this point on.
Yeah, I mean, tax abatement for a business brings in other people, and when you're bringing in something for the community, you know, it's appropriate in those cases. So it's a little bit different than doing it for a business that would increase the population, increase the growth need.
Yeah, and I assume CTAE and all that could get involved as well with high school...
The marketing programs, things like that, and, yeah.
And getting sports therapy or stuff like that. So I think it's just providing more opportunities for our students to experience real life.
I'm just a little sad it's so far south. There's cheaper land.
Yeah, but that's all open right now. It's available.
I know also from a...
But it's cheaper up north.
From an economic standpoint, uh, you know, as the, the county, we, it's at eighteen percent commercial digest right now.
Yeah.
And we need to do something and be part of the solution to help grow that, and so I think, you know, we, I don't know what it looks like, but we as a board should continue the conversation to see how the educational system plays a part in the economic development part of it, and I think Dr. Bearden and I are on board to, to look at that.
Yeah, I, I, I very much appreciate that because I, I would say to you that, as I've looked around, and I've only been on the Development Authority for about a year and a half, and, uh, as I've looked around, as you were talking about, you compete for good teachers and salaries in the area and things like that. No surprise that businesses and opportunities for economic development like this compete between counties for those that can come. And I'd say a, a large number of our competing counties, uh, they have formed a bond with the school board to actually give abatements across the board to help bring the benefits in that they will be receiving for long term. So, Chairman, however we can work this in the future, I think it would be a win-win-win for all of us.
Well, I think people need to realize how important the commercial type, tax digest is to us, you know? For us, and, and James McCoy actually explained it a really good way about the commercial di, tax digest fills the gap, and the gap is me, as a parent of a single child in the school system, my taxes, my property taxes, cover the cost of that student, but my neighbor who pays the same amount of taxes to me and has four kids in the school system, somebody covers that gap, and that's what we need the commercial, uh, property tax to do. So, uh, we, we definitely need to be part of that.
And just for the record, uh, I'll mention this, uh, you had a, a great comment there from the Chamber, but I would, I would tell you, we were introduced to this project by the Chamber, so it's been a team all the way along.
Very well explained tonight. Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody have any other questions, comments?
Good.
Thank you. It'll be on the agenda next Tuesday night then for a vote.
All right. The next item is our update on government's team...
Oh, Kristen.
Oops, sorry, Kristen.
Kristen?
Well, I just wanted to wrap it up. We, as this is part of our Forsyth partnership, and as we met yesterday, you know, we, we talked about the project again, and from a school system perspective, y'all mentioned the, all the deposits of the project, and then you also mentioned CTA, which is a very, another big component. So from our perspective, there's little risk, particularly because of the pilot part of this, that we're going to continue to receive the same amount of tax revenue that we have, but again, we're going to also be getting the Sloss revenue, which is additional budget in the meantime, but it's little risk from ourselves as well as this goes on. So we're fortunate at the meeting, the, the Development Authority has still, has done a lot of the research, the county's still doing research, so they're still looking into the financial future of that, and that, fortunately, that's something that they can take on. That's not something that we have to analyze and do for, on our side, because that's the, on our pure view. So for us, we're just only looking at the tax payment side of this and looking at the project as a whole, looking if it looks beneficial to the county. So from our perspective, that's all we have to do, and from us, it looks like a good project, so that's all we really have to look at. It looks great.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next item is the updated government's team goals two and four with Mitchel.
Who is a Phillies fan and has a great big smirk on his face right now.
Oh, no. Can't stop smiling. You know, I was going to start out asking about the cornhole pits, but those guys are, I, I didn't see that on the...
Seven to six.
Oh, just short.
They lost seven to six.
They made a nice comeback, I, I understand, in the ninth inning, but just not...
I've always liked you up until I just found it out.
All right, what's, this is...
Let's move on to the government's team goals.
Frozen up here somehow?
And you brought some Seashouse guests?
More rice.
Yeah, okay.
Just to clarify, right?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm doing this one first. Okay. Well, good evening. We've moved beyond afternoon. We're in the evening now. So I have, uh, the honor of coming up here today and, um, and being the first, I think, to do this. Governance Goals Two and Four. Dr. Bearden, it said that you'd asked for some occasional updates on, on how we're doing and, and the areas of alignment and, uh, in terms of making our schools feel smaller. So I'm going to jump right in and, uh, start in with our strategic plan and, and the alignment here by talking to you all about governance team goal two, which is alignment of strategies, initiatives, and resources to the Forsyth County schools' learner profile. All right, and I know this is a quick review, and I know my crowd in the back is probably tired of hearing me present on strategic planning, but we're going to jump right in anyway. Obviously, our safe, connected, and thriving community for all is our, is our vision that we came up with in this last strategic planning process a year ago. Our mission is to deliver an unparalleled education for all to succeed. Our mission is to deliver an unparalleled education for all to succeed, and then our belief statements were, which really represent the core values that we stand for as a school system. And again, just as a reminder, this was all finalized and you passed this, which is really what we refer to as our strategic map, it was passed in May, this was something that we put together in conjunction with our community, with our parents, with our business partners, and these are our collective beliefs, and right out of the gate, in terms of alignment, we wanted to make sure that we took the things that are our end result, obviously, the learner profile being the ultimate end of the road as we plan backwards. But in the last year, we've also developed our leader and educator profile, and Jennifer Cratchlow's team did a great job of putting this together so that you have a visual of the alignment that we have across the board, and we could take any one of those and do a whole in-depth conversation about that, and you can look and say, well, you know, I see, you know, leads with intentionality here, but pursues continuance learning here, the thing to think about when you analyze these is, is take that name at the top, if it's a learner, that's one perspective, for the leader, it may be a little bit different perspective, which is why some of that vocabulary maybe doesn't match up exactly, but the thinking behind it does. So, creative and critical thinking at the learner level, that's where, at the leader level, we're embracing innovation, you know, we're applying some of that critical thinking to our practices of teaching and learning. So, anyway, this is a visual representation of that alignment, which was really one of the first steps that we took as we were putting together the mission, vision, and belief statements, is because these profiles are the guides to our work, we wanted to make sure that those things were in alignment, and they line up very nicely. The governor's team, or excuse me, the five strategic goal areas that were put together this past year are before you there, and in each one of these, as you recall, we had performance objectives, between two and three performance objectives with each one of these, 14 in total, but these were the, these were the big picture areas, the big buckets, if you will, that our community said they want us to make sure when we're bringing to life all these belief statements and this mission and vision, these are the sorts of things that we want to make sure that we're aimed towards, and so these are the big five strategic goal areas. All of that sounds great on paper, but if you don't have a plan for bringing that to life at the school and the classroom level, then it's just a great plan, it's not really a roadmap, and we really wanted this to be a roadmap for where we're going over the course of the next five years, and so we really wanted to take a systemic approach to this, when you think about where the rubber meets the road, it's at the school level, and I will just tell you, Ms. Rice is here with us, she and I have worked really closely with our principals to make sure as they go into this, into this planning process, that we've got consistency in terms of from school to school, as well as from level to level, and so we were very intentional about that in our efforts to do that, I'll get into more about that actual process in just a minute, but as you look at this, kind of this flow chart, the learner profile being our end in mind, we've got our strategic map that we just talked about, our mission, vision, and belief statements, our performance objectives, those are what make up the strategic map, we have district action accountability plans, and then you have school improvement plans, and they really should not be in isolation at all, they should all be in alignment with each other, and the idea, again, going back to that last slide, is by streamlining these things, that's what will help us bring about coherence throughout our system, all right? Now, if you don't inspect, and anybody in this room knows this phrase comes from our old friend Ellen Kohan, but you must inspect what you expect, and so we've got an evaluation process out there called the LEAKS process, so one of the conversations that Leanne and I had, and certainly with HR's blessing on this, is we've taken the LEAKS process and have adjusted that, our evaluation process, to make sure the things that principals are sharing, and I'll show you this a little bit later on, but make sure the things that they're sharing reflect their school improvement plan and our strategic goals and where it is we're trying to go, and so when you add that element of accountability to it, that's where you really get the ships all sailing in the same direction. So, I'm gonna walk you through the systemic approach to school improvement planning, again, a lot of times in other systems or in years past, some of this was hit, some of it not, we just felt like it needed to be more intentional, so what Leanne and I decided on is she took Amy Bartlett, the director of elementary, out to the elementary schools, and I took Heather Gordy with me, and we went out to the middle and high schools, Sarah and Kara from Special Ed and Student Services joined us on those meetings, and we went out and sat side by side with our principals and APs as they were putting the plans together, just to make sure that we could align our support to their needs, and certainly TNL is on the, is on the cutting edge of making sure they're providing incredible support for the goals and the programs that our schools are putting in, that we just felt like it was vitally important that we partner with them as we put this plan together, instead of saying, okay, here's our strategic goals, we're gonna work on this as a system, and you guys work on that at your local school, and not necessarily have that connection, and so we put a few miles on the car, and actually, it's probably one of the most enjoyable things, I think Leanne would tell you the same thing, one of the most enjoyable things that we've done in our time up here, and really seeing these plans come together at each school, it's really been, it's been a really enjoyable process. So, we're with them, planning side by side, making sure that they've got alignment to the district's vision, mission, and beliefs, common strategic objectives, as I said, we've got five major goal areas, each with their own performance objective, and so what we sat down as, really, at a cabinet level did, was determine that there was gonna be four, four of these goal areas and performance objectives that the schools would have to tie their strategic, or their school improvement plans to, so they all have the same four objectives, and I'll show you that in just a bit. How they get there, totally, totally up to them, that's where the autonomous piece comes in, but certainly, this was a way for us to make sure that we were headed in the same direction, and then, as I said, we aligned our LEAKS evaluation process to it. So, there again, there's your five strategic goals, for illustration purposes, we're just gonna take the social and emotional health bucket and look at how that would work from the county or district level down to the school improvement level, so, social emotional health, and as you can see there, there's three performance objectives that go along with that, and the one that we collectively decided would be the one that we would ask schools to hold themselves accountable to, while they're probably doing all these things, we wanted to make sure that they put their plans together and align to promote wellness, respect, and balance for students and staff. We heard that come up over and over from our community as being, as being a vital focus that we needed to take on. So, that's the big strategic goal area, that's the performance objective, and so when you look at this process, really what we're gonna look at is what does that look like at the district level, and then what does that look like in the school improvement planning level, and so at the district level, and our cabinet meetings now are really guided by updates that we have when leaders of particular departments or leaders that have ownership over these elements of the school, or the strategic plan come in, they have to give updates, and very similar to what you saw Dr. Salome do up here tonight with her update, is what we're doing for a portion of our cabinet meetings, and so when you look at this, and these are all on the website, by the way, these are all available to our public on the website, we're gonna focus in on that, that promote respect, wellness, and balance for students and staff, so what you've got in front of you is the, is really the guiding principle or the executive summary, the guiding principle for what Sarah, Sarah Taylor and her team are doing to bring this about, and when we put the action accountability teams together to work on this, I think it's important to note that it's not just Sarah, she didn't just have members of her department, but her team is comprised of members of her department as well as members from other departments, so that we all understand what's going on across the board in each other's departments, so that we all have a working understanding of that, where we can support each other and know the goals each other has, and again, that idea of system coherence is so vital to this. So, that's at the district level, you can see there what Sarah and her team are looking at, and then this is an example of at a school level, I pulled Otwell Middle School's plan here, and so for, where that star is, you can see their social emotional health is the big goal area, strategic performance objective, promote respect, wellness, and balance for students and staff, and their major focus is they're developing a positive behavior support system that they call their dog initiative, and if you were to sit down with Priscilla St. Jean and her, and her staff over there, or attend an LSE meeting, they would take you into the details of all their action steps and what all this, what all this is all about, and if you take another school, Liberty Middle School in this case, again, if you look at social emotional health, they have the same performance objective, same exact performance objective that what Otwell has, but they are gonna, they're gonna achieve that objective at their school through their star values program, and then when you go on to the next one, I think, yeah, I put a high school in there, West Forsyth High School, same performance objective, and they are gonna increase student-staff connectedness at West through their icon framework, and all these frameworks, when you sit down and go through their action steps, they're, they're all very unique to their community, and very unique to their cluster in some cases, or their school, and sometimes when it's a brand-new school versus a school like Lambert that's, you know, had their success for like a 15-year run, how they, how they achieve this is gonna be very different, but having them go to the same goal is very important, and that's where the consistency comes in. So, just as a side-by-side, and I don't know if you can see that, see that really well or not, but you've got on the left-hand side, you've got the strategic plan at the action accountability teams, and so you see where promotes the wellness, respect, and balance for students, and then over there on the right, you have Otwell's plan, so that's where those two connect. We could do this, we're not going to, we could do this for each of the performance objectives that we chose for them, each of the, each of the four that schools have, and you can kind of look at Otwell's there on the right, and you can see, you know, they've got a climate, culture, and community, which is really their vertical team goal, and they are working with everybody in their vertical team on that same goal, and then you've got two goals in the, in the part of the strategic plan called the learner experience, which works on, which focuses on student achievement and then student growth, and so for all of our schools, all 43 of our schools, and this is the first time we've really done it this way, but all 43 have those same four strategic goal areas and performance objectives that they all are focusing on, so I hope that makes sense, yeah.
They're solely focusing on this, or that's what they're gonna be accountable for?
Exactly, and I thank you for that clarification, they're focusing on so much more-
Right.
Than this. In terms of their, their school improvement plan that they know they're being held accountable to, if we, if we had them do a plan for all 14, they would be in the business of, they would spend their entire fall making nothing but plans, or summer and fall making plans, and, you know, they're doing a lot of that work, but in terms of the intentionality and documentation, these are the ones that collectively we felt like were the top four based on the feedback from our community during the whole strategic planning process, and so that's, that's why we gave those, but no, to your point, Lindsay, they're focused on, you know, a variety of things, but our point to them is you can do 10 things, you know, fairly well, but you can do three or four things really, really well, so let's focus on three or four things doing really, really well while you continue to do the, you know, the other things, yep. And then so those are the alignment of the, of the plans, and then when you've got the evaluation, all right, the state has given us LEAK standards, and I'm not gonna read you the LEAK standards, but one of the things that Leanne and I did a year ago is, you know, both fresh from, from being principals, we sometimes felt like we could use a little bit more clarity in what exactly are you asking for when you upload all your documentation and that, and so what we decided is we went through the eight standards and turned each of the eight standards into an essential question, that we want the principals to be able to come in and explain to us, and so what we've done with these essential questions now is we have, have rooted these in our strategic plan, so like standard number two, all right, standard number two has to do with climate and culture and LEAKs, what are you doing to promote respect, wellness, and balance for students and staff? We basically, this is a chance for them to explain, and I hate to use the phrase get credit, but, but really, I mean, if you're, if you're looking at it in school terms, it's getting credit for the work that we know that they're engaged in, and so when you look at this, you can see where the social emotional health goal aligns to standard two, and then if you, if you go on, I can show you where the learner experience is back down there, those both align to their, their standard number one of their, of their evaluation. Climate, culture, and community goes right down there to standard eight, which has everything to do with, with developing the community in and around their school, so, that's a frustrated coach right there, just drawing out plays on the teleprompter, so, but that's where we felt like we needed to just put a little bit of teeth in here of accountability to make sure that it's, it's more than just something you say you're doing, but you're gonna be measured on it as well. Okay, so that's, that's the streamlined process, I hope that hits the spirit of alignment that we were talking about, you know, all the time, and I was gonna mention a stir about being off campus, but I do want to say this first, 'cause, as a sidebar here, 'cause Cindy won't brag on herself, but Cindy, Leanne, Sarah, and I, it was about two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, we attended the University of Georgia State of Education, and when we got there, the entire thing was built around teacher and staff shortages, and it was, it was, you know, it was almost like a whole day in a crash course in human resources, and what Cindy won't tell you, and, you know, her slides tonight tell the story, but, you know, our down year was over 90% retention, all right, that is, most school systems throughout the state of Georgia would die to have a 90% retention rate, and so we went through a variety of strategies that day, and the reality is, these are strategies that Cindy and her team have been doing for two, three, four, or five years, probably beyond, but I've been in tune with it, so, so we are really so far ahead of the state, when she talks about grow your own, she could have done a workshop there on that, people were talking about grow your own and scratching their heads like, what does that mean, I'm like, oh, Cindy's been talking about that since, you know, since my principal days, you know, so, so there's a lot of that going on, but when you go around the state to these different conferences, as we tend to do, they all wanna know what's in the secret sauce, you know, of Forsyth County, and so this next slide, really, I just wanted to put a few things, these things down, but, but the fact that we're very clear about our priorities and that we have them aligned, goes without saying that providing the freedom and autonomy to principals, so long as they're going towards the big goal, having that freedom for their community to do what's necessary and right for them, providing evaluation, but not as a gotcha, but evaluation with support and helping them, you know, seeing them as teammates to achieve their goals, and then sharing all this openly with our stakeholders, and I know in this past year, that's, that's been talked about a lot, but I, you know, as you look around again, we're, but for a handful of really animated angry folks, we've got a really satisfied community, a community that wants to see us continue to get better, but, but they're on our side because we've been so open with everything we've done as we've gone along, so, just want to point that out. So, that's governance team goal two, governance team goal four, which is how do we make our large schools feel small, yep?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Y'all, you might already know this, but professional learning communities, what does that mean?
Professional learning communities, and I, we could do a whole diatribe on that, but, but it's basically taking-
Leanne, do you wanna, do you wanna give the best definition of it, so I don't-
Is it for teachers, professional learning of teachers, or of stu-
Everything.
The professional learning communities are for educators, and so that could be leaders, teachers, it's pulling a group of people together to learn together.
Okay.
And so, we do that, we have that with our, with our teachers, and that's part of recertification with the state, the PSC requires us to have professional learning communities, but what we do in Forsyth is try to make it relevant and meaningful, and so our principals have become a professional learning community, we come together, we learn, we study problems of practice together, our teachers are professional learning communities, they do a lot analyzing their curriculum and their assessments and student work to try to guide their, their work as educators.
Like a, like a-
Give you an example, I go, go visit a school, I might see the second grade teachers working together as a team, you know, and they're planning, and they're sharing resources and ideas, that's a professional learning community, go to South Forsyth Middle School, seventh grade math teachers are meeting together as a team, same thing, sharing ideas, what's working for you, what's not working for you, where are students missing on certain targets, and just having those conversations and learning together as a, as a team of educators.
Yeah, our whole focus is to decide where do we want students to go, and how are we gonna get them there, and what are, what do we do when they've already mastered it? What do we do when they haven't? And we look at that with, our teachers are doing that with students, and then we're doing that with our principals to help guide their work and get them from where they're starting to where they wanna be.
Once upon a time-
That was a two-minute explanation, that would've taken me 20.
Once upon a time, when teachers were hired, they were given the keys to their classroom, and they were pretty much isolated.
Yeah.
That has flipped over the years, the goal was for teachers to never work in isolation, to network with other colleagues and peers that have similar responsibilities, working with similar age groups of children, and to learn from one another, 'cause we're better when we, when we work together.
Thank you.
All right, good, okay.
That's a good segue into the large schools feel small.
There we go, so governance team goal is, is large schools feel small, and I know that each month we have a superior spotlight, which takes place at a regular board meeting, but when Dr. Bearden asked that we, you know, give an update, or that I give an update on governance team goal number four from time to time, I feel like this is one that either brings in a school or a department- either brings in a school or department or somebody that's doing some great stuff, and they all are, to bring them in and let them bring it to life. And so I've asked tonight, I asked Forsyth Central, because some of the things that they've got going around this topic come over, I think we lost some of your support tonight. Dr. Lowe was taking care of his dad, otherwise he would be here cheering Casey on. I just want to make sure that's clear. But he's also very clear that Casey would do a good job with us. Now, if Casey comes up, this is their school improvement plan. We have not worked together on, you know, on this presentation, so if you don't make sure you connect to this plan, man, I'm.
Yeah, no pressure.
No pressure.
So first of all, yeah, I'm Casey Martin, one of the assistant principals at Forsyth Central. I really appreciate you guys giving me the chance to come and talk to you about some great things that are happening at our school that we're really proud of in connection with our leadership in the county. So we started what we call the Forsyth Central Connectivity Initiative. And, you know, you look at why, you know, why would we do this? Obviously, it's going to make students' experience better. It's going to help them feel more involved and more a part of the school. But some other reasons within our school improvement plan, which you don't have in front of you, but you can go back and look, so check on me, but basically connectivity teams that we created are all over our strategic plan. They're a part of almost every one of our action steps within there, so it's very important for what we've got going on in our school. Not only that, it does align with the governance team goals that have been spoken about tonight, especially goal number two and goal number four. Goal number two, you look at the learner profile, we feel this gives our students a chance to engage and contribute, also to interact effectively with each other, which really hits home with the learner profile, but also with the county's strategic plan. It gives our kids a chance to be safe, to be connective, to be connected, and also to be thriving. So these are things that we're proud of, and, you know, when students are on these teams and these groups, it gives them a team within the team. The big team is our school. The connectivity teams are their team within that team, which does make our schools feel smaller. And those are some, and I'm going to go into detail, a little detail about some of our connectivity teams. But like I said, it enhances the overall learner experience for our students. I want to recognize a couple of people that came with me tonight. Chase Coggan and David Bailey are two of our aspiring leaders. They're teachers that have helped me with one of our connectivity programs. They've done a phenomenal job. Also, our lead counselor, Allison Carvell, has been a huge part of one I'm going to talk about, and they're here for support. We're connected, just like we are with our kids. So. First of all, our new dog induction, this is a program that we have that, basically, we like to introduce and welcome our students that come in after the first day of school. So these are kids that are moving from different districts, different states, different countries. It's unbelievable where all these students come in from, and it's intimidating coming in. So we try to welcome them, we have them in the media center, we feed them some pizza, we give them T-shirts, we give them a keychain, a water bottle, we introduce them to the admin team, counseling team, athletic director. We talk about all the different things we have going on at school that they can have a chance to get connected with, and what adult leads the clubs, activities, sports, and just try to get to know them a little bit and know their story. You can see the top picture, the bottom three students on the top picture are triplets that came to us last year, and they're from Turkey. And they were credit deficient coming in. And a success story for us is those three last year with the hard work from our teachers and them, obviously, they were able to graduate on time and walk across the stage last year. So just a little story from some of our new dog inductees. Another one that we do is where Chase and David come in is our Seashouse Connect. So it's a student-led group. These are our two coaches that coach the students that are leading this. And we're just trying to get our kids to have real conversations. You think about, all you'd see is the kids staring at their phones. They're not really, you know, making eye contact and talking about, you know, real things. So what this group does, and what they've done a great job of leading, is we use physical activity as a means to foster these conversations. So they organize this, we're out there, the kids are playing football, they've got spike ball going, and then it leads into them getting into groups and having some discussions. And I will say that we do not make them put their phones away, but if you'll look at these two pictures of the kids, I don't really see a phone in any of those pictures. And that's just, that's a great thing to see, to know that they're truly communicating with each other. So another group is our principals advisory group. This is where Dr. Lowe and I have a chance to meet with representatives from throughout our school. We've got representatives from our academies, our athletics, our activities, and also our sports. And so we meet with these groups throughout the year, and we just sit down with them and have real conversations and say, look, this is a safe place. What's going good at the school? What do you guys enjoy? And they're going to fill us in on those things. And then we do ask the question, what are some things that you don't like that's going on? What are some suggestions that you may have? And throughout these meetings through the year, we've had some great input. We went to have an outdoor pep rally with the entire school, which was a big hit. We had an outdoor homecoming, which was from their input. Also, this is where Ms. Carvell came in. She met with us as the lead counselor, asking questions about our counseling team. And they gave some just unbelievable input to some things that I know that she has, you know, initiated with her group this year and moving forward. So it's just giving those students a voice to be heard and to know that we care about what they think about what's going on. So this is a couple of pictures of the groups talking with us, and we do recognize them at the end of the year with a certificate. So. The last program is our big dog, little dog program. This is basically a mentoring program where we match up upperclassmen, these are seniors, with a freshman, and create a bond between them to where they can get to know each other throughout the year. So it starts out with just introducing them and letting them meet each other, and then, you know, with some guided conversations that they can have with each other to where they get to know each other. And throughout the year, the little dog, which is the freshman, can ask questions to the big dog about their experiences, and it just increases that bond between students. And if you'll look at the picture up top middle, these are our little dogs at the first meeting, and literally, how scared did they look that first meeting? And throughout the year, as you can see as it goes down, we're sitting outside at the picnic tables, and all the kids are laughing and having fun. It's just, it's such a great thing to see and to be a part of. And I've got teachers that are awesome that step into it, and we're all working on this together. And we're just excited to do these things, and that they line up with county initiatives and what we're all doing within Forsyth County. So this is a quote that really, we feel like stands out and truly encapsulates what we're doing with all four of these connectivity teams. I'll read it to you. "I define connection as the energy that exists between people when they feel seen, heard, and valued, when they can give and receive without judgment, and when they derive sustenance and strength from a relationship." I really appreciate y'all letting me share today with some great things we have going, and I'm just proud of what we're doing, and thank you for the opportunity. That's great. Thank you. Any comments, questions? Kristen, anything? All right. Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is.
I think there's a little delay. Go ahead, Kristen.
No, I was just going to say that was phenomenal. The question with the way they greet the students and make them a part of the potential family right away, that was really impressive.
And just so board members know, as I'm visiting schools this semester, the guiding question I've asked every principal to talk to me about is, what are you doing to make sure students and staff feel connected at your school? So this is a great example. I'm sure when I visit Central, some of these things that Casey shared today will come up. But it's very consistent from school to school, the intentionality of making sure all students and all staff feel that sense of connection, which came out loud and clear in our community meetings last year.
Well, and I've already attended several local school council meetings, and every one of them has an improvement plan that mirrors exactly what you said. So the communication is happening from top to bottom, so thank you for that.
Great.
So let's go on to the next best item, which is the 24-25 school calendar draft.
All right. So I will do my best to get us out of here and get us on to dinner. All right. So here is the timeline that we'll have for putting together the 24-25 school calendar. We have provided an initial draft for our local school council, cabinet, and principals for input prior to this. I'm going to show you some changes that we've already, or adjustments we've already made based on the LSE feedback that we've got. Tonight, obviously, we're presenting to you, and then tomorrow, we will take this. Jennifer and her team will put this out there for feedback from our community, and then we'll come back together to present the final version of this to you after we've adjusted, you know, for any more feedback at that time. Couple of things to remember, and I haven't put this slide in in the past, but, you know, if anybody's watching this and they're wanting to look at this calendar or as you field questions on this, here are some things that must be considered before you start moving dates around on the calendar. We've got to have 178 student days. We've got to have 190 teacher days. The balance of student days between first and second semester, we try to keep that within four days. And what I mean by that is you don't want to have 98 days one semester and 90 days or 70 days the next year. I don't know, I didn't do my math right. Eighty. Okay. Yeah, that was close. Ninety, seventy-eight, somewhere in there. You want to try to keep that balance. So, you know, having 88 and 90, or, you know, 89, 89 would be the ideal thing, but it's never a perfect science when you're trying to squeeze those 178 days in. The other thing we've always used as a guide is we try to make sure that our students are out by Memorial Day weekend. And the thing that I would just remind everybody is whenever you're tinkering with this calendar, make sure every time you remove a day, you've got to replace it somewhere else from what we have set on there. The early August day, the early feedback we got from LSE is when they look at that and you see that you're starting school on August 1st, they're like, oh, my gosh, you guys are trying to, you're trying to put in this year-round school, you're trying, that's not, that's not true. This is one of those calendar years where it just falls the way it falls for us to get those 178 student days in. And now, the early August start day, we could avoid if we want to give up things like fall, Thanksgiving, and spring breaks, you know? But at this point, I've not seen much feedback from LSEs nor last year from the community feedback about, let's wipe out fall break, or let's, you know, cut Thanksgiving down to a day or two. So if you want to keep fall break, Thanksgiving, and spring breaks, then we just need to understand that that makes us need to start a little bit earlier in the school year.
Wipe out fall break, you'll get us all wiped out.
Yeah, absolutely.
The Thursday start has really been a really successful way to start the school year for kids to have Thursday, Friday, certainly at the elementary level, to get them back in the routine again, and then having a couple of days of rest. We hear from our elementary parents and teachers that that's been huge. Certainly at the secondary level, especially high school with the complexity of doing high school scheduling, having those two days when everybody's back to work out the schedule so that when they come back on that Monday to get the ground running, hit the ground running. So that Thursday start has really been valuable and successful. So that factors into this, you know, into this puzzle as well. And then again, trying to end by Memorial Day, so that sort of boxes you in. So there's only so many places you can get the days. The feedback that we also got last year was about, you know, traditionally, and I'll show you on a calendar here, traditionally in October, and I think going years ago back in March, kindergarten through eighth graders would have two half-days in the middle of the week for, they would be two early release days, and then parent conferences in the afternoon. And then that's usually followed by a Friday, which is a professional learning or student holiday. The feedback we got is that parents felt like then they had three days during the week that were disrupted. And if you could, is there any way you could take those two half-days and make it a full day of parent conferences so that only two days in the week are disrupted and not three? So in other words, so instead of parents having to take a day off of work on a Wednesday and a Thursday because their kids are coming home early, they would now only have to take off on Thursday. So that was what we put out there for you all last year, and we approved that. And then what we do on those days going forward, starting next year, is, let me get to the calendar here so you can see it. So what I put up here is the 22-23 calendar, which is the current year. So this is going by the old way of doing it. So if you look in October, you see the 19th and 20th are two half-days followed by a full day. For parents that work, that's three days of the week that they may have to miss work. And the feedback we got last year is there any way you could cut that down? So if you shift over to the 24-25 calendar on your right, we've cut out one of those days. And so the 17th is an online learning day instead of an early release day. It's an online learning day. It'll be asynchronous, and that way teachers can, they can have their conferences but still be checking in on their computers to work with the kids that are learning from home. And by doing it asynchronous, parents aren't locked into their kids having to be in the class at certain times. They can go do their conferences and come home, and the kids will still get a day of school in. So that's why we did that last year. That question came up about why are we doing that this year? So I just wanted to reiterate the thought behind that. It was really in response to the feedback we got last year and passed it, and so we wanted to keep that consistent in this year. The other addition that we had this year is on November 5th. It's an election year, it's an even-year election year, and so we've had a lot of folks from our community, especially those in the election board, ask, is there any way that you could make that a student holiday so that families or so that teachers could get out and vote? They look for volunteers from high school kids to parents, everybody to work at the polling places and so forth. When you look at the compression of the calendar, I didn't feel like we could squeeze that and make that a holiday. Felt like we still needed to get a school day in there. So we're going to try this out, at least I'm putting it out there, we'll see what kind of feedback we get, but trying it out to say, okay, we'll meet folks halfway, we won't have kids in the school that day, this frees teachers up to go volunteer, frees students to go volunteer, that sort of thing. But there will be an asynchronous learning component to this that students will have to, will have to check in and do some work. The other thing that's really important is we're getting ready to do a new online learning system. And so this, we all know back in March 12th of 2020, when the world shut down, coming out of the gate, we had a lot of problems because everybody was on the platform at the same time. We've got this new platform, so that, you know, by that point, that should be widespread in use. And so if we'd have one day where everybody is using it, that'll be a great test day for if we get into the winter and have to have an inclement weather day, or, you know, God forbid, we have another pandemic, we'll have tested it out with all, you know, all 55,000 students on there at the same time. I thought you were going to ask a question. Okay. So here again is the 24-25 proposed calendar. Got that in there. And where that differs a little bit from the original one we put out at the start of this year is this new calendar that I put up there includes the feedback we've already received, and most of the feedback we received, there was questions about November 5th. And so the answer to that question is yes, it'll be asynchronous learning. The other question in the original calendar that I put out to LSE is if you look at February 14th, that has traditionally been a holiday for students and staff, that Friday and Monday for the long weekend, and then a district professional development day on the Tuesday that came after that. In the original plan, I tried to balance the online learning day that we had in November by putting one also on that February 14th. So the families wanted to get a jumpstart on their vacation that weekend or were going away, they could do it and still learn. It was resounding like we don't want to lose that Friday vacation day. That's coming from parents and staff. So went back to the drawing board and squeezed that in. The other thing that LSEs, when you, if you look back at that original calendar that was sent out, had the 19th of December as the last student day, and then Friday as a teacher professional development day. And the feedback on that is, you're not going to be really effective in professional development with teachers on a Friday going into Christmas break or winter break. And this is a way for us to go ahead and make that an early release day there so that they can wrap up end-of-semester activities with students, particularly at the elementary level, and get everybody out at the same time. So what that meant was we had to put a professional learning day in for teachers in the next semester, and that's why in this particular version of the calendar, teachers will have to come back for a day after Memorial Day. But we'll wait to see what the feedback is on that. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. See what the feedback is.
How long of a feedback is it?
For a month. Yep. Yep. I think, well, just short of a month. The 28th of February, I think, is when we, or 28th of October is when we cut that off. Feels like February.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
So next item on our agenda is the executive session for personnel. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Light. All in favor? Motion approves. Going to the executive session.
Thank you.
Casey? And Wes, one of you just called? Okay. Perfect. Okay.
I know. You always reach over and hit it.
Thank you for turning on Darla's mic.
He always does.
It matches up.
I'm loud. I can't believe they can't hear me.
Have you ever seen the, there's a complex kind of like that in Carter'sville.
Yeah, that's Lakeview, that he talked about.
I wonder, did they do the same thing? Do you know?
The CEO that's going to run this is the one that runs that.
You mean, did they give them a tax evasion?
No, I don't know about that.